Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Temple ISD Board of Trustees on June 10, 2019. First item of business is to declare a quorum, which we do have. The second item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
All right, thank you. Third item is a public forum. I believe we have one gentleman signed up tonight. First about the public forum, we'll now hear comments from those who have signed up. Each person may speak no more than three minutes, and if there are several people wishing to speak on the same topic, everybody needs to sort of come together and decide that. During this part of the meeting, the board will listen, but will not engage in dialogue or debate with the speakers. And the board reminds speakers that public comment is not the time or the place to bring board complaints about a particular program or a particular employee or individual. The board has adopted specific complaint policies and specific procedures for presenting those complaints. Tonight, we have Mr. Rayford Brown to speak. Mr. Brown, you have three minutes.
Rayford Brown, Dr. Ott, Chairman Posey, members. I've just perused the 43-page Senate Bill 11, School Safety, and its eight-page fiscal statement that was just signed by the governor. Basically, it says in Section 7.061B that "The commissioner shall adopt or amend rules as necessary to provide a safe and secure environment." Under the godless society that we have created in the last 65 years, I don't think it is humanly possible to design such a building. We attempt to treat symptoms instead of correcting causes. We ban implements instead of training operators. The greatest practical psychologist to ever walk on the planet lived about 2,000 years ago. A couple of hundred years later, his devotees put together a manual for human interaction and safe relationships. In this manual, one commandment was repeated 20 times. It is not a religious act, but it does require a behavioral change, a definition of learning. It is very simple and, if strictly followed, promotes complete safety and a bonus of a lot of happiness: love one another. The solution to safety in buildings is to engrave this on every door and in each hallway. Thank you.
Okay. Item number four is a proclamation honoring Representative Hugh Shine for support of public education during the 86th legislative session. Representative Shine, would you come down front, please?
[inaudible]
Item six is executive hires. Mr. Palmer, nothing tonight. Item seven is a 2019-2020 budget workshop discussion of the 2019-2020 projected revenue information, as items provided at the board meeting. So remember, you should have the information in front of you. And Ms. Vaden, Ms. Vaden will give the information tonight.
Thank you. And good evening. I appreciate that. Y'all have a great day. Public education is not seen in the future of revenue in probably over 30 years, and our representatives are working very hard to support public education. We really appreciate how close you work with us.
Yeah, do y'all want to just stay? Do you want to move to the next item?
Next item is superintendent's recognition.
Okay. And we have several students here tonight to recognize, and so when they heard my voice, they were going to start coming forward. But we had 45 students from Temple High School that qualified out of regionals to attend the UIL Texas State Solo and Ensemble Contest that was held at the beginning of June. Our band choir and orchestra students did a fantastic job at this competition, with 20 students from Temple High School earning a superior rating. Please join me in congratulating them on their success as I call their names. Not all of them were able to be here tonight because it is summertime, but we do have several that are here, and we want to make sure to recognize them. So our band solos that earned a superior rating, we have Marissa Manis, Kyle Cunningham, Jessica Fettig, Jaden Xavier Cuevas, Lizette Wong. For our choir solos that earned a superior rating, we have Shenaria Moten, Genevieve Myers, Cody Little, Liam Bro, Lauren Greenfield, Haley Campbell, Caleb Gammert, and Jordan Price. And for our band ensembles, we have a couple of students that we've already announced, and so they'll just kind of wave when I announce their names, and we have a few more that will be coming forward. We have, for the saxophone quartet, the first one, we had Kyle Cunningham, Christopher Dudick, Kevin Montalongo, and Emily Watts. And our second saxophone quartet was Elliot Abel, Micah Ball, Dominic Gamino, and Colton Rankin. You have to. So please join me in congratulating these kids and their efforts.
[applause]
I don't have to.
Ready? One, two, three. Please get. Congratulations.
All right. Thank you, guys. And y'all can absolutely leave. Y'all don't have to stay, so y'all absolutely go and leave too. Congratulations. Our next recognition is the Superintendent's Leadership Award, and this is an award that was created when Dr. Ott became superintendent about a year ago, and we presented, I think, the very first one in August of last year. And the leadership, the award is intended to honor those that really go above and beyond. And kind of what exemplifies the award itself is that leadership is the attitude assumed by those with a vision to raise expectations, who are committed to achieving a goal, and whose conviction inspires others through enthusiasm and optimism to reach that goal. We've had the honor of recognizing a student, and I think two staff members so far, and this evening, we have the very distinct honor of recognizing our first parents, who are also such key partners in the school system. And so I would love for Dr. Danny Little and Rebecca Little to come forward, and as they come forward, I'll kind of read why they were chosen. This award recognizes those who go above and beyond expectations to serve a cause greater than themselves, and I am very honored to present it this evening to Danny and Rebecca Little. If you were to look up the definition of servant leadership, don't be surprised if you see their picture, because they exemplify the very meaning and definition of that word. Volunteering their time, talents, and resources to help others is something that's just part of who they are, and it's central to their core beliefs. From Rebecca's work with our East Side Boy Scout troops, serving on the TEF Board, organizing project graduation, or Danny's bringing Stop the Bleed training to Temple High School, providing free athletic physicals, and mentoring our students who want to pursue the medical field, their selflessness has no bounds. Danny and Rebecca, for seeing needs and stepping up to meet those needs time after time, we thank you.
In their current discomfort, is part of the reason why they're winning this award, they really like to fly under the radar, and they support programs that their student, that their own children are not even involved in.
So come on.
They think that's fantastic. They're very committed.
Yes. Yes. Oh, they, sorry, one more.
Okay. Ready? One, two, three. Got it? You're good?
Yes. Thank you. And our next honoree this evening, we will be honoring Mariel Williams. Typically, the Tazbe Media Honor Rolls or awards are presented a little bit later on in the summer, but this is Mariel's last board meeting with us because she is moving on to attend graduate school. And so before she does that, we had recognized her, and she was selected. So Christian, if you would like to come forward, Christian Hernandez is our Director of Communications, and he works very, very closely with Mariel, and so we wanted to make sure he was part of this honor as well. But we are pleased to announce that Mariel was named to the 2019 Media Honor Roll, a program sponsored by the Texas Association of School Boards. The Media Honor Roll recognizes media representatives statewide for fair and balanced reporting of news about public schools. Criteria for the district's election included the media representative's efforts to get to know the superintendent, the board president, and the district's mission and goals; report on school news in a fair, accurate, and balanced manner; give a high profile to positive news about schools; visit the schools; and maintain a policy of no surprises by sharing information with school officials. Mariel, you have done all of those things and more, and it has been an absolute pleasure for both of us to work with you, and it's benefited our school district in so many ways. We just thank you for investing in Temple ISD and for telling our story with integrity.
I think the thing I appreciate most about Mariel, not only is she fair and accurate, but we have students that know she is. I mean, she takes the time to get into our students. You know, Ms. Jones, she went on the Four Good Field Trip with us, for example. You know, I mean, she really invests in our students, and I truly appreciate that. And good luck on your graduate studies. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And I'll quickly add, I feel particularly qualified to recognize her because I was in her position previously as an education reporter for The Telegram, and she has done this job better than I did, to her credit, and she's really involved within our schools. I've seen her on so many campuses, and she's involved with our Wildcat Mentors Program. So she has not only invested of her time professionally, but personally as well, through our students, and we really appreciate the years you've spent here. Thank you so much for your contribution to Temple ISD.
Let's see. And our counselors, could y'all come forward that are here this evening? This next recog- recognition, excuse me, is for the No Place for Hate designation. We have three campuses that earned this distinction this year, and with public displays of hate on the rise, it's more important than ever for schools to commit to programs that clearly define expectations and behavior for all members of the community. Whether you're a student, an educator, or a family member, you have a role to play in combating bias and bullying as a means to stop the escalation. The No Place for Hate self-directed program does just that, and it helps provide skills for our students in mediation and respect for all. And it's a designation that these ladies for their programs went above and beyond to accomplish, and we are truly, truly grateful for that. And you receive your, you will receive your banner for the, for your foyer. I was going to hang it up, but I didn't want to cover the T in the back, and I didn't know where else. But here, this is Scott's, so I'll let, if you want to show. So these banners, they're annual, because it's an annual designation, and they will hang in the foiers of each of the campuses. So I have you guys as well. But we just thank you guys for going above and beyond to implement something that really does impact our children, and we truly, truly are grateful. So thank you. Congratulations. So much. Thank you. I know. Let's see. There we go. Yeah. That might work. Yeah, there we go. That works.
Okay. Ready? All right. One, two, three. Got it?
All right. And for our last recognition this evening, can our representatives from Jefferson come forward? This was a really fun surprise. In fact, they did it, and I don't think anybody knew they did until they got acknowledgment in the mail. But for the third year, the Dallas Cowboys partnered with the Texas Lottery to provide the Funds for Fitness Grant Program to Texas public school institutions looking to create new or enhance existing youth health and wellness projects on their campuses. As part of a five-year, $300,000 program commitment, the 2019 Funds for Fitness effort is awarding 15 schools from across the state with funds totaling $60,000 this year. Five grants each that would benefit elementary, middle school, and high school. We are pleased that Jefferson Elementary was the recipient of one of these grants this year in the amount of $5,000 that will support the sensory needs of their students. So we are so proud of you guys, and thank y'all for being innovative and looking for creative ways to support our kids. So we wanted to thank you very, very much for going that extra mile. So thank you, and congratulations. I know. Congratulations.
Item six is executive hires. Mr. Palmer, nothing tonight. All right. Item seven is a 2019-2020 budget workshop discussion of the 2019-2020 projected revenue information, as items provided at the board meeting. So remember, you should have the information in front of you. And Ms. Vaden, Ms. Vaden will give the information tonight.
Thank you, and good evening.
Well, first, before we start, I again want to thank you in front of everybody here for all the hard work you've done, you and your team, to pull all this together in a quick manner. It's a lot of information under tight deadline, and y'all have really done some hard work, and we appreciate it.
Absolutely. It has been a whirlwind. When we came back from our Christmas break, I think we started out very optimistic with the legislature and what that would look like, and then we went through some times it wasn't quite so optimistic, and even to a period where we thought they were not going to be able to agree, and we would see no changes whatsoever. So got final word about 10 days ago, and it's been exciting ever since. But overall, really, really great news, probably the best news since I've been with the district, and certainly a position that we'd want to be in to be able to figure out how to do all this in this short period of time. So you've got two pieces of paper in front of you, and I'm going to go through the first one that says tax rates and fund balances. This is a page you've seen before, and it's got a lot of information on it, and I'm going to try and go through probably just the summary pieces that really, really pertain to our upcoming budget process. You'll see the fiscal years that are in the left-hand column, and then the tax years that that pertains to. The next column is our property tax valuation, and you can see, obviously, over time, those have increased. You will see there in the green sections, 1415 and 1516, some major increases. Those were the years, as you recall, that Panda came online within our increment zone. The next two years, some small decreases, and then the year that we're in, a little over 3.5% increase. And then projecting for next year, at this point, we are projecting a 6.4% increase. I know you've seen information either in the paper, on the news, about property values, what those have done as far as the county is concerned, and so we, along with others, are projecting a more significant increase than we have in past years. Part of why that's important, not only just the tax collections themselves, want to point out that this year, we do have a new chief appraiser that came online in January, and so this process has looked a little different from our perspective. In the past, I think we started out with a very conservative estimate, which grew over time when we got certified values and when we got levies. This process has been the opposite. We've started out with full values and kind of estimated back into what realistically we think final values will be. Now, with that said, they have been in contact with us, have been very supportive, answered lots and lots of questions, and so just the process itself looks a little different with the appraisal district. Another reason this becomes important, one of the changes in our state funding formula, they have gone from using prior year tax values in determining what your state aid is, to using current year tax values. And so again, these estimates become more critical than they have in the past to really being able to estimate your revenues. Going across the columns, you'll see, related to the tax rate, the bottom of the maintenance and operations piece of our tax rate, you'll see a dollar three. That's another one of the pieces that came out of the legislative session. You know, they had lots of talk about tax reform, and so this was the mechanism to be able to do that. So our tax rate on the MNO side, instead of being the dollar 12 that it has been, will now drop to a dollar and three cents. Moving over the tax rate for INS, this was not compressed in any way as far as the legislature's concerned, and in fact, we are proposing at this point that it may go up as high as 32 cents. That's the estimate that we have in there now. That's four cents higher than it is currently. We did not, on purpose last year, we did not raise our INS rate. We were using some fund balance. This year, we will likely use some as well, but we probably will need to go up on the tax rate to some extent. If we don't need to go up the full four cents, we won't. We will go up only what we need to. Then the next column has to do with our, the current year portion of our taxes, the collection percentages. This doesn't take into account any delinquent taxes that come in. This is only the current year portion. And again, you can see steady collections, again, towards the bottom of the column, the most recent years have been upwards of 99%, and I would expect that may could happen again as well. And this is another piece that the Tax Appraisal District has done really well as far as collecting our taxes for us. This is a component that goes into state funding as well. They look at local effort as far as each district's tax collections. The fund balances, we are looking at, you will see 1718, which was the last fiscal year that's been completed and audited. We finished with just over 17.6 million in our general fund, fund balance. We are projecting at this point to finish this year at about 17 million. So as you can see, we're using just over 600,000 at this point. Again, absolutely on purpose, we know that during the year, this year, we bought land based on projected enrollment that's going to increase over the coming years, and then our participation in the 31st Street project as well. So absolutely on purpose, we know we're going to use some fund balance this year. And so looking at next year, you'll see that number goes back up and quite significantly. So our proposal is that next year, we will add back to fund balance to get to our goal of two and a half months, which is recommended.
Cal, can I make a few comments on that? So the, first of all, I want to go back to the tax rate piece. Even with INS projected to go up by four cents, our total tax rate is down by a nickel projected, and that's largely due to the compression on the MNO side. So at the end of the day, instead of a dollar 40, we're looking at a projected dollar 35 or less, pending if we need to go up four cents or three or whatever it may be.
Correct. And we'll get certified values from the appraisal district in July, and so we will make another estimate at that point, what we need to look at as far as our INS rate.
And then with respect to the fund balance, we spent about 1.3 million when you include the land purchase and then the first payment of participation in the 31st Street project. We still have another half of that to pay next year, so kind of keep that in mind. It's about 625,000 left, so we will need to put back, and we're already planning for that, a substantial amount into fund balance so we can maintain viability. So, okay.
Okay. The next to the last column is our enrollment, and again, you see over the last few years, you do see an increase in enrollment. The, you see almost 75 students increase, and so going into proposal for next year, I have just left that flat. I have not built in any kind of an increase as far as enrollment or ADA at this point. And then the very last column just shows that our property value per student, as you would expect, is increasing as well. Questions? Comments? Okay. If you'll turn to the next page. We did not, on purpose last year, we did not raise our INS rate. We were using some fund balance. This year, we will likely use some as well, but we probably will need to go up on the tax rate to some extent. If we don't need to go up the full four cents, we won't. We will go up only what we need to. Then, the next column has to do with our, the current-year portion of our taxes, the collection percentages. This doesn't take into account any delinquent taxes that come in. This is only the current-year portion. And again, you can see steady collections. Again, towards the bottom of the column, the most recent years have been upwards of 99%, and I would expect that may could happen again as well. And this is another piece that the tax appraisal district has done really well as far as collecting our taxes for us. This is a component that goes into state funding as well. They look at local effort as far as each district's tax collections. The fund balances, we are looking at, you will see 1718, which was the last fiscal year that's been completed and audited. We finished with just over 17.6 million in our general fund, fund balance. We are projecting at this point to finish this year at about 17 million. So, as you can see, we're using just over 600,000 at this point. Again, absolutely on purpose, we know that during the year, this year, we bought land based on projected enrollment that's going to increase over the coming years, and then our participation in the 31st Street project as well. So, absolutely on purpose, we know we're going to use some fund balance this year. And so, looking at next year, you'll see that number goes back up and quite significantly. So, our proposal is that next year, we will add back to fund balance to get to our goal of two and a half months, which is recommended.
Callan, can I make a few comments on that? So, the, first of all, I want to go back to the tax rate piece. Even with INS projected to go up by four cents, our total tax rate is down by a nickel projected.
Correct.
And that's largely due to the compression on the MNO side. So, at the end of the day, instead of $1.40, we're looking at a projected $1.35 or less, pending if we need to go up four cents or three or whatever it may be.
Correct. And we'll get certified values from the appraisal district in July, and so, we will make another estimate at that point, what we need to look at as far as our INS rate.
And then, with respect to the fund balance, we spent about 1.3 million when you include the land purchase and then the first payment of participation in the 31st Street project. We still have another half of that to pay next year, so kind of keep that in mind. It's about 625,000 left. So, we will need to put back, and we're already planning for that, a substantial amount into fund balance so we can maintain viability. So, okay.
Okay. The next to the last column is our enrollment. And again, you see, over the last few years, you do see an increase in enrollment. The, you see almost 75 students increase. And so, going into proposal for next year, I have just left that flat. I have not built in any kind of an increase as far as enrollment or ADA at this point. And then, the very last column just shows that our property value per student, as you would expect, is increasing as well. Questions? Comments? Okay, if you'll turn to the next page. I think this is the page everybody wants to see. You will notice the way this is set up. The board adopted funds are at the top, and then you will see your other funds. You'll see state grants, and then you'll see federal grants. The first column is your 1718 fund balance. So, this is fund balance at the end of last year. And you'll see the first one there, the 17.6 million. We just talked about that. That's the general fund, and that's the one, I think, when school districts talk about fund balance, that's usually what they mean. But do note that there are other funds as well that have fund balances as well to maintain. The next column is the 1718 actual amounts. So, these are the actual revenues that have come into the district during last fiscal year. The next column is 1819, and that's our current budget. That's not a projection in any kind of way. That is our current budget at this point. And then, the next column is our 1920. This is our proposed or our planning amounts at this point for next year. If you will notice, under 1920, you'll see that its projected ADA is 7871. Again, that's higher than you'll see there, the 7780 in prior year. Again, I have left ADA flat, so that's a, that part is a projection based on, that was through the fifth, six weeks of grade. So, that's a projection based on that point. So, the 7780 for 1819 is going to be somewhat low. But, tax rate then, for next year, we're looking at, again, the $1.35 in total, comprised of the $1.03 and then 32 cents possibly on INS. Overall, you'll see the note there. That's a projected ADA. We've got tax values, again, based on estimates of pending exemptions, and we've got protests that are still in process, so we've got preliminary adjusted for those kinds of items. And then, we're looking at a 98.5% collection rate on our property taxes. So, with those things said, if you fall across the general fund, local revenue, you'll see in the increased-decreased column, we're looking at about $932,000 less as far as local revenues are concerned. Most of that is going to be property taxes, and again, you would expect that with our tax rate going down. But there are some other numbers in there as well. Our interest earnings are in there. You'd have gate receipts in there. So, that's not all property taxes. There are some other amounts in there as well. The next line is the state revenue, and you can see that the increase there at this point is estimated at 8.2 million. And so, if you net those two together, you're looking at 7.3. And again, that's pretty close to numbers that we've seen as far as estimates from the state, so pretty confident as far as those numbers, again, other than those few other types of revenues that are included as well. Federal revenue increase is estimated at 400,000. About half of that is going to be related to our E-rate that we get in relation to our technology equipment purchases, and about half of that is going to be related to our SARS Medicaid revenue. Then, the next section has the food service funds. You can see about $230,000 increase there. Debt service, almost a $2 million increase in revenue there. Again, depending on what happens to the tax rate at this point, that's built in at 32 cents. So, total of about 9.9 for all of the funds that the board is required to adopt. Then, the next section is other local revenue funds, increase of 12,000, not significant in comparison. The state grants, you will see the major change there. Our EEIP funding has gone away. Other than that, the funding has remained pretty steady. And we were able to shift some of the expenses related to that EEIP grant over to our Title I grant. We've had some capacity there, so that's been very helpful. Then, the federal grant section at the bottom, you will notice, in total, it's got nearly a million-dollar decrease. This is some, somewhat, I guess, almost misinformation. I want to talk about the Title I piece. You'll notice that it looks like there's basically that whole decrease, the $900,000. In reality, any unfund, unspent funds from this year will roll over. And so, last year, there was about $800,000 to $900,000 that rolled over, so we anticipate that same type of thing happening again. So, in reality, the net change in federal grants will be about the same as well.
Is that way every year? Is that standard procedure to roll it over?
It has been for us. Again, as long as you do that on purpose and as long as you don't use those funds up, obviously. And as, you've got staff, particularly in Title I, you've got several staff that are paid out of that funding source. And so, as raises occur, you do chew up more and more and more of those funds. And so, you will come to a point where you'll have to make some decisions because the rollover will not support those kinds of things. So, anyways, then, in total, overall, we're looking at about eight and a half additional million dollars for next year. So, a lot of information. Questions do you have?
Does the board have any questions, Callan, at this point? I know we got another workshop coming up on expenditures, and then we have, of course, the final adoption, so, all right.
And if y'all have any questions, please let me know.
We know where to get hold of you. Yeah. Thank you. Item eight is the board presence report. First, I just want to start by saying how much graduation, the ceremony, was such a beautiful ceremony, and I thought that everything was well-run, it was well-timed, everybody was in good spirits, and it took a lot of work by the district. I just want to thank the district staff involved. It didn't, doesn't come together by itself. It was very, very organized and a very nice event. So, I just want to say that about the graduation event. Item A is designation of delegate and alternate to the Tazby Delegate Assembly on September 21st in Dallas, Texas. The Delegate Assembly is Tazby's annual business meeting held in conjunction with the TASSA-Tasby Convention held September 20th to the 22nd, 2019 in Dallas. The 2018 Delegate Assembly is scheduled Saturday, September 21st. Each active member may appoint one delegate and one alternate to represent their school district. In polling the board, I believe that Ms. Virginia Suarez would be our delegate to the meeting, and then alternate is Dr. Sanha Sanhee. Is that correct? Is that, no, hear that? I think we do need a motion for this.
I need to refer.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gallin, second, and motion by Gaines. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Okay. Well, now, we'll hear a little more about that before the time comes up. So, thank y'all again for doing that and representing the district. Item B is future items of discussion. And Dr. Ott, is there any items?
I have important dates.
Okay. Actually...
Does the board have any future items?
I don't. Yeah, okay. All right. And C is important dates. Now, it's Dr. Ott's turn.
Okay. One second. First of all, I do want to take a second and thank our Fort Hood liaison, Terry Jones. I thanked her last time, but she wasn't here, so I want to thank her when she's here. But I want to thank her for coordinating the field trip for our student leaders to Fort Hood. It was really nice to see our student leaders around some of the best adult leaders you can find anywhere at our military installation, and they got a lot out of it, and we really appreciate, you really coordinated all of it and did a great job, and we really hope we can do it again. But I want to extend a token of gratitude to you in front of everyone. Thank you so much for doing that. Today, we had an administrator rejuvenate retreat. That is the first time we've had that, and Amy Hayes is all the way in the back there. Definitely appreciate her for working with Baylor Scott &amp; White Health and putting that together. That is a program that they initially started for physicians when they face burnout, and we've had a chance to work with them and have that retreat with elementary teachers, secondary teachers, some of our advanced academic students at the high school, and our principals and assistant principals today. And some of them are in the audience, and I just want to tell you, you look rejuvenated, so... So, I'm going to assume it went well. The, June 13th through the 15th, we have the Tazby Summer Leadership Institute in San Antonio in Virginia signed up to go to that one. June 13th this week, I believe it's Thursday, is it Thursday or Wednesday? Thursday, we have our special school board meeting over expenditures. Callan just went over revenues, then we do expenditures, and then, at the end of the month, we do the budget adoption. And I do want to thank Callan, Kent, Joe, Lisa, and Eric, because I think whirlwind is a very modest term, but that Callan used, but it certainly has been. But I think at the very end of the day, we're going to have some exciting news to share with staff, and we're really looking forward to that. See, we also, June 20th to the 22nd, we have the Tazby Summer Leadership Institute in Fort Worth, and Lanell Davis and Shannon Myers will be attending that leadership institute. The 26th, we have our policy committee meeting here at 4:00 in the board executive room. And then, right after that, we have the budget adoption, June 26th, here at 6:00. The 27th, the Temple Chamber of Commerce, that's the 2019 Baylor Scott &amp; White Health Community Showcase. It's at the Mayborn Convention Center from 5:30 to 7:30, and I will be attending that along with Christine and maybe some other folks. We do have an error on the important dates. I noticed that. June 27th, that's listed again where it says special school board meeting. And Beth, if you can correct this with Maryland, I'd appreciate it. But that should be the facilities committee, and that is at 4:00 p.m. We do not have another special board meeting. That's at 4:00 p.m., and that will be at Scott Elementary. That's where we will start the facilities meeting, 4:00. Typically, we meet here. I think the last time we met at the high school, and so, we're starting to do a little more kind of onsite tours, and this one will start at Scott, and then we'll probably go to Travis afterwards. Regular board meeting, July 8th. And then, excited to report to the board that we are working very close with Temple College and their administration. We will have our first-ever joint board retreat between TISD Board of Trustees and Temple College Board of Trustees or Board Members, and that will actually be here July 17th. And we'll focus on academic partnerships and marketing, and we'll set some regional goals, so we're very excited about that opportunity. And that's all I have. Are there any questions from the board?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Ott. Item nine is our consent items and consideration for tonight of approval, items A through G. Is it the pleasure of the board to hear these all together or individually?
I'll make a motion that we hear them all together.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Ms. Gallin. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye. I'm sorry, I apologize, Ms. Davis.
That's all right.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
All right. The ayes have it.
Next.
Okay, thank you. Item 10 is action items, human resources. Mr. Palmer.
Good evening, Mr. Posey, members of the board. You have three pages of hires this particular board meeting, as well as one page of addendums that were added since we put this together, which was, I think, last Thursday. So, if you take a look at any of those, see if you have any questions. I'd put those before you as far as hires for the 2019-2020 school year. I would recognize a couple of folks on here because I can see they're out here, and I hate for them to leave without recognition. One is the new assistant principal at Lamar, coming from Bonham and going over to Lamar, and that's Tracy Dennis Witter. Won't you stand up so they can see who you are? And then, secondly, not from within the district, outside the district, we have Bethany Sutton, who will be the new assistant principal. Quonesa Williams went over to Cader, and so, they have hired Bethany Sutton as the new assistant principal at Jefferson. So, welcome to Temple. Both these ladies, by the way, got their master's degree from Central Texas, University of Texas A&amp;M, Central Texas, so congratulations to that.
Any questions for Mr. Palmer? This does require board approval.
More for approval, plus the agenda.
Okay. Approval by Ms. Suarez, seconded by Ms. Gallin. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. All right.
Thank you very much, board.
Thank you. Item two, consideration for approved attorney agreement.
Mr. Palmer, you have another item. Okay.
Actually, I have it written out somewhere, so I'll make sure. Actually, I totally forgot, but anyhow, it sounded good, didn't it? Best I could do in a spur of the moment. That's actually the end of the era, folks. I won't get to do that anymore. That was my last time doing Teachers to the Board, so that's kind of exciting, too. Probably more exciting for y'all than it is for me, but any case, well, I guess, we haven't passed that yet, so...
This one's on the law firm? Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Posey, members of the board. Dr. Ott and I met with representatives from two school law firms, Sarah Leon Firm and the Wash Gallegos Firm. And the firms were also, I also had our department, the HR department, review those. The directors of our department went through the different proposals and the brochures in regards to the two firms. And the goal is to find someone to partner with to work particularly with personnel issues. Y'all are probably aware already that Cheryl Mail is resigning again, and this time, it's official, and so, we need to replace Ms. Mail and probably need to do something for her recognition. She's been incredible the last 10 years. So, at this time, our recommendations to work with the Sarah Leon Firm, and so, that'd be the recommendation I bring to the board.
Tonight, I guess we have the two items for Akabam, Morrell, Hanson, Powell, and Mill.
True.
Then, second one is Sarah Leon and Associates, so we need to take these separately.
Okay.
So, on the first one, on the Akabam, this does require approval. Is there a motion?
A move to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Davis.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you.
Mr. Posey, just a quick explanation on that. Mainly, our folks in our finance department, bonds, so forth like that, and then also, our sped department will be the two that work in the most part with that group.
Okay. Gotcha. Second one is Sarah Leon and Associates.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Dr. Sanhee. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Gallin. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item B is curriculum instruction. Mrs. Adams.
So, Mrs. Rogers, Mrs. Goldman, and Ms. Bureau will be coming to do our presentation for us tonight.
Welcome. Thank you.
And the board may remember, but we had discussed rotating on even years or odd years between presentations on the following programs, fine arts, CTE, athletics, and advanced academics. And we really consider those our bellwether program, programs in TISD. And so, this year, fine arts, and you may remember Katrina Lott's speech given the presentation she did a few board meetings ago, and then advanced academics, and next year will be...
year will be CT and athletics.
Mr. Posey, Dr. Ott, and members of the board, I'm excited to share with you some updates on our advanced academics program. And I have with me Robin Bureau from Temple High School. She's been at Temple High School for 11 years, and she's the AP Coordinator. And then, I also have Sharon Goldman, who's the IB Coordinator at Temple High School, and she's been at Temple High School for 24 years. This evening, we're going to be talking about teacher support and training, which is an area that I'm not sure that you are already familiar with in terms of how we support our teachers in advanced academics. And then, we'll go over some updates to our program in grade 6 through 12. So, to start with teacher support and training, it's very important to us that our teachers have the knowledge that they need in order to successfully deliver their instruction in our advanced academics classrooms. So, we do make sure that they're trained on a regular basis. We have training in-state for our AP and pre-AP institutes, and our teachers attend that training at least every five years. And then, we have IB institutes, and as you know, IB is a global program. And so, those trainings are offered across the state, and we also send our teachers to those trainings every five years. Sometimes, those programs have updates to their curriculum or updates to their assessments. And so, we want to make sure that our teachers have the information they need to be able to successfully prepare our students for those end-of-year assessments. In addition to the training that teachers attend in the summer, we also offer district-wide vertical teaming. And what that means is that our 6th grade and our 7th and 8th grade teachers from the middle schools join with our high school teachers in the same content area, and they get together after school about three times a year to talk about what they're teaching, how their students are doing, how things are aligning, what do my students need to know to go to you, and what have my students already learned, having been in your classroom. And so, that's always a great experience. Sometimes, they share lessons. Sometimes, we read an article together and talk about how it impacts our professional practice. Additionally, we give our teachers an opportunity to observe their peers. So, if a middle school teacher wants to go to the high school and see what does it look like in Sharon Goldman's class, what do my students need to be prepared for, then we give them that opportunity. In order to work with our GT students, there are state laws and regulations that say that teachers have a certain amount of training they have to undergo, so we make sure that they have their 30 hours, and then also their six-hour updates. And then, finally, we make sure that our teachers have the differentiated resources that they need to support our advanced learners. There we go. As you are aware, our middle years program is at Travis Science Academy. That's our program to support IB at the middle school level. At Travis Science Academy, our students have the opportunity to receive instruction in Spanish and also in German, and both of those programs continue to the high school. They participate in community service projects, and they also have the opportunity to participate in Project Lead the Way classrooms, and that supports our STEM focus. And of course, again, IB has the global focus, and so, each of the units, regardless of what course the students are taking, kind of ties in that global perspective. If you look at the picture that's there, that's a picture from this year's IB NYPD showcase at Travis Science Academy, where students create campaigns for awareness of different issues that are important to them. So, this year, we saw things like how to interact with individuals who have autism or prevention of the abuse of the elderly. So, the students really take those projects very seriously and come up with some really nice presentations to share. Across the district, at our three middle schools, we offer advanced academics courses for all of our core classes. So, that's English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies. And those courses, again, through the vertical alignment meetings, are designed to align to the needs of our AP and IB courses, so that students are successful and so that they are used to that rigor as they move up through high school. And typically, about the top 20% of each class are enrolled in those courses. Just to talk a little bit more about the advanced courses offered at the middle schools, we have an advanced math pathway that lets our students get ahead, so that they are at an advanced track when they get to math in high school, so they can take Algebra I in middle school. And we're very proud to offer geometry in middle school as well, and we're one of the few districts in this region that offer that, so we're very proud to offer that. This week, and actually, last week, because we had so many students that were recommended, we have our math camp that helps us to place those students into that geometry course and Algebra I course. Also, for high school credit, we offer Art I, Spanish and German I, and then, we also have a few CTE courses that students can take for high school credit. In terms of enrichment, we want our students to learn, and we want them to enjoy learning, but there's a lot of enjoyment of learning that can happen outside of the classroom. And so, our Math Counts program is something that we're very proud of. We have many students that participate, and then, we have groups that compete at the state level. I think you'll remember, you recognized them a few board meetings back, and Bonham usually sends a group to state, and we're very proud of that. Middle school UIL academic competitions is also something that's very popular among our advanced students, and we're very proud of those accomplishments. I was just reviewing the progress that the students made, and I saw even at Lamar Middle School, there was an entire category where Lamar placed first, second, and third in the Science II category and had a first-place finish in the Maps and Charts category. So, we're very proud of the accomplishments of our students in the classroom, but also outside the classroom. The Duke Tipped Talent Search is a program that is designed to support our advanced students and their parents and provide them with networking opportunities and opportunities outside the district, so that they can have enrichment opportunities. And then, of course, our robotics competitions, which, as we focus more on STEM, becomes increasingly popular with our students. Moving on to the 9th and 10th grade, we continue our support and our development of our advanced students through the offering of advanced courses in Math, Science, English Language Arts, and Social Studies, and then, Level 2 of Languages Other Than English. And we really have a high focus on our GPS or Global Perspectives in Society course, which really prepares students for the rigor that they're going to encounter when they get to those AP and IB courses. And the other thing that it does, because the NYPD program is not at Lamar and Bonham, it brings in that global analysis of issues that those students did not have in middle school and brings them to the same level as the students that came from Travis as they get ready for those advanced programs. Finally, for my portion of the presentation, I'd like to just share, and you also have this, I believe, in your packet or your reference, but just kind of a comparison of the programs. And I'd like to note that while we recommend that all students participate in advanced academics in middle school and then in 9th and 10th grade, it's not required, but it is strongly recommended. But these programs are not exclusive to students who have been on the advanced track. I also want to point out to you that there is an opportunity for college credit through all of those programs. Students in the AP program are encouraged to take the AP course, but we have many students who also don't take the course, but they do studying on their own, because the course doesn't fit into their schedule, but they want to try to earn the credit. Our IB students are required to be in the class, and then, of course, our dual-credit students take the Temple College exam at the end of their semester. So, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Goldman.
Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Ott, Mr. Posey. I almost called you Dan, I'm sorry. I taught him, so. I've known. I could tell some stories. No, not really. But thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and I'm going to give you just a brief rundown about the IB coursework. And it's interesting, because several of you have students who have completed it and earned college credit, numerous college credit hours from it. But we have two things. There is the whole program, or there is a certificate, which could be considered much like the AP program. The program gives you 24 hours of college credit at a state university. A state legislature passed that law several years ago, that it is guaranteed that they will receive 24 hours of college credit with the completion of the IB program and earning the diploma. That also gives them the opportunity to write the extended essay and participate in TOK, which is a philosophy-based course, and the community service hours through CAS, Creativity, Activity, and Service. And we offer subjects, 18 IB subjects, whether it's diploma or certificate, there are 18 separate subjects. All right. Any of your students who have gone through IB will recognize this immediately. It's part of the IB experience. The first, the strip of the plastic there is all the exams, for security reasons, come in these blue plastic bags, and it's always a really big deal to get the bag, and it's an honor to cut the bag and, as we say, unleash the beast, so they will know what their exam is like. Then, the little string tag is what the British use instead of paper clips, and the very first time they test, it's like, it's just like this is IB. It's different from the rest of the world. And then, they always have a peppermint or two or three. I think during this past testing season, the students that tested consumed about 1,000 peppermints as they were testing, because they start with one, it kind of calms their nerves, and then, as they're testing, I continue to pass them out if they want one, and it gives them a little burst of energy as they're completing this marathon. Those things will be in their brain for the rest of their lives, most likely. All right. This year, for the year that's incoming, we have 30 juniors that are coming in. I'm expecting another strong class. Like always, these things go in cycles. So, we are just graduating a strong class, we're expecting another class coming in. We administered 398 exams in May. Generally, our passing rate is at or above the state average as far as Temple High School is concerned, and we hope to continue the trend of history and music scores surpassing the world average. And as I said, we have a strong group, so really expecting great results this year as the percentage of students who are earning their diploma. We had some discussions with students this past year about ways to alleviate some of the stress that is naturally associated with taking advanced rigorous coursework in high school, and some of those suggestions that were born out of that were doing some activities throughout the course of the year that got them off campus and gave them a day just to think about and do other things. So, we did that in the fall. The seniors went to, when they turned in their EE, and they were so delighted, we went to a field trip in Austin. In the spring, we had a rejuvenate retreat, much like the retreat that was held just today for the administrators, and that was extremely helpful for their students, and they enjoyed it. And then, also in the spring, we took the juniors to the IB College Fair trip, and we try to do that every year. There's usually about 80 universities there, and the students actually get face-to-face time with those university reps, and they can see exactly how much they can receive from their IB diploma. As far as incoming students, we have an IB boot camp, the 1st of August, every year, and that's where the incoming juniors will meet with seniors and former students and just give them some little tips and stress reduction and just do some team building. All IB classes have a workday every six weeks built into the calendar, so students can use that day for one-on-one time with the teacher, they can use that day for a catch-up day, they can use it however they need it. They just need a mental health day, they can use it for that as well. And then, we have IB student mentors, where the seniors will take an incoming junior under their wing and answer questions and encourage and do all those things.
And if I may add, Ms. Goldman, all of those support systems that you see, that Ms. Goldman talked about, were all implemented as a response to the input that we received from the parents, from students, whether it was a survey, or a focus, or a student, or a parent, or a student, or a parent, or a student, or a student, or a student, or a student. That has been very, very beneficial and very appreciated. Dr. Ott, I followed up with them twice this year, and they all commented on that was, you know, that's what they were hoping to have, and we did it, and it was very satisfactory for them. Now, it's time for the Bureau in Advanced Placement.
As has been said, thank you, Dr. Ott, Mr. Posey, members of the board. So, for Advanced Placement, very similar to IB, only we're more focused on testing. So, for some information just generally about the program, it offers 15 different independent courses for college credit. Those range from core to languages to art. It is open to all students, so just like Ms. Rogers said, we are open enrollment. We try to make sure that every, it is encouraged by College Board, highly encouraged, to make sure that every single student is able to participate and test, no matter their disability, ability levels. Core syllabi are approved by College Board, as well as Ms. Martin, who is our assistant principal for advanced academics, and myself. Students can earn up to 45 hours of college credit if they choose to pursue all available options. So, some accomplishments from last year as well as this year. So, for art testing season this year, we had 201 students that were enrolled in AP classes that took tests. We had 182 testers in May. Those included 45 students that chose to challenge the test that were not enrolled in an AP class. So, most of those were our IB students that chose to take the AP test. 326 tests were taken this May by THS students. Again, those were challengers as well as those that were enrolled in AP classes. We had 339 hours of college credit that was earned last year by our students. And then, we had massive growth in both AP Studio Art. It went from about four students to 11 students this year that chose to test, and then, we had tremendous growth in our AP World History programs. So, about four students last year, and then, it was, I believe, about 17 students this year. So, support systems for AP as well as IB, some of that overrules due to the advanced academic nature of the programs. So, AP and IB open house is always offered in summer, as well as during the year, we have some open house information sessions. I know that Dr. Ott and some of our administration really pushed for a showcase where we could demonstrate some of the awesome things that our kids were doing for AP and IB. So, that was a fabulous system to kind of show incoming students what was available to them. We have our Summer Bridge Camp for incoming 8th graders. That is about a week program that has both information for athletes, as well as information for advanced academics kiddos. So, Ms. Goldman and I both make appearances, give them some information about what AP looks like, what IB looks like, and why they need to really attempt to be part of that program and take full advantage of those opportunities. We have our Advanced Academic Mentor Program that was begun two years ago, and then, we are revamping, rejuvenating it, making it better, so that we have a lot of good support there for our students this coming year. We have potential gear-up funding for our 2020 AP testers. And then, of course, we are always so very, very grateful for all of the TISD funding for our testers that are currently enrolled in AP-tested courses. Thank you.
I will just briefly touch on our dual-credit and Bioscience Institute programs. The majority of our dual-credit is offered in partnership with Temple College, but we also, from time to time, have students that attend with UMHB. And through our CTE program, we have students that earn credit from Texas State Technical College. Students can earn up to 30 hours of dual-credit in core academic courses, and we offer courses at Temple High School, and we also offer courses, or courses are offered at the college, depending on the number of students that are taking the course. And again, as Ms. Bureau stated about the AP test, the district does fund a portion of the dual-credit fees for those students that participate. In terms of supports and accomplishments, the PAC meetings that we have been having for the past few years have really helped to align college, Temple College and UMHB with our counselors and with the district as a whole. We get together once a month, and usually, we have someone from Temple College, from the Bioscience Institute, as well as from UMHB, the high school counselors and administration, as well as myself, and we talk about what's happening, where our students are, what are things that are coming up that we need to have foresight for, so that we can eliminate any barriers or hinder any issues that might be coming. And so, Dr. Ott mentioned the retreat that's coming up with Temple College, just another example of how we're partnering with Temple College to make our programs successful on both ends. In addition, we have parent and student orientations at the beginning of the year, as well as our students, because they are college students, they have access to Temple College's Student Support Services. One thing that's exciting, and also the result of our dual-credit or our relationship with Temple College, is that in years past, we've had teachers or instructors from Temple College go to the high school to teach those dual-credit courses, and because of the strength of that relationship, we now have Temple High School teachers who have the credentials to be able to teach those courses. Ms. Bureau is one of them, and so, she teaches the dual-credit English course right at Temple High School. We have 91 students enrolled in dual-credit last year, and we had 13 Bioscience graduates who earned their Associate's Degree at the end of this past year. This is a picture of some of the activities that Ms. Bureau, Ms. Goldman talked about with our IB students. Again, we really wanted to focus on the whole child, and while we want to push academics and we want the program to be rigorous, we also recognize that at the end of the end of the day, these are still kids, and we want them to enjoy life and enjoy learning. And so we're providing opportunities and experiences for them to do that. And so I'll show you one more video if we can get it to play. This is a video from the IB boot camp that Ms. Goldman holds in the summer, just a team-building exercise. But again, an example of us recognizing the need for students to play while they're learning, because in building a culture of success, we want them to do well in class. We want them to be successful in their classes and on their tests, but we want them to be successful in life. And that happens when they are laughing and participating with their classmates in a way that's fun and enjoyable. And so that concludes our presentation. I want to thank you, School Board, for your support, your commitment of time and resources to our students in order to make our Advanced Academics an ever-increasing success. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions from the board? Want to get you like? No, thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah. C is Finance and Facilities. Mr. Boyd, I don't think there's any items tonight. D is Student Services. Mr. Hugenberg, I don't, same here. Okay. E is Board Committee Reports. Facilities Committee Update, meeting held May 30, 2019 at 4:00 p.m. Mr. Gaines.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. We have a project update here. StanTech presented the most recent draft of auxiliary service master plan. The plan encompasses improving of the maintenance grounds and food service and warehouse facilities. It also includes consideration for site work, parking development, and security enhancement for the complex. And Dr. Ott will discuss the plan with the city to see if any joint uses opportunities exist. And following that, he will present this plan to the members of the RZ. The committee also provided construction updates for the projects at Temple High School, also as well as projects at Scott, Western Hills, and Travis and Lamar. The Scott and Western Hill construction will be completed this summer and will be ready for staff and students in August. Travis and Lamar projects will be complete at different times over the next year. All the projects are within budget. Also, we committee toured the auto tech and sped spaces at Temple High School. Both spaces will be complete in time for classes to begin in August, and both will be within budget. Our next meeting will be held June 27 at 4:00 p.m. here at CAO. Thank you. Oh, it's Scott Elementary. I'm sorry. Meet at Scott Elementary. I'm sorry about that.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. Policy Committee Update. Meeting was held May 29, 2019 at 4:00 p.m. Mrs. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. A brief update on the recent legislative developments was given. The basic allotment was increased, has increased, for school districts, and the state's percentage of the total funding also increased. Dr. Ott stated that, for most part, he was pleased with the session. Mr. Hugenberg mentioned that he is still working on CW Local with TASB Policy Services to finalize the language. Hopefully, he will have the policy to present at the next Policy Committee meeting. Administration recommended changes to DC Local concerning the presentation of teacher contracts to the board for approval. Proposed changes would delegate the final authority for teacher contracts to the superintendent. This change would let the district hire teachers immediately instead of waiting for the next board meeting. Dr. Ott mentioned that we lose some teachers to other competing districts due to those districts being able to extend a contract right away. Dr. Sanji asked about the blended learning surveys results. The meeting adjourned at 5:00 p.m. The next Policy Committee meeting is scheduled for June 26, 2019.
Any questions from Ms. Davis? Thank you. Item B is consideration for approval of board policy DC Local. Hugenberg.
Good evening. Tonight's loan policy we are presenting for consideration is DC Local, which is employment practices. But have no fear, the Update 113 came this morning, and so we're going to start working through that, as well as the post-legislative Student Code of Conduct. So that's going to be coming soon. Thinking of DC Local, current policy states that the board retains the final authority for the employment of all contractual personnel, which includes teachers. And so at nearly every board meeting or special board meeting, Human Resources presents to you a list of teachers that have gone through the process and are recommended for approval. A teacher is not extended a contract until after that board meeting vote. So there might be a week, two weeks, or three-week period between when the principal actually recommends a teacher for hire and that next official board meeting. And occasionally, particularly in a highly competitive teaching field or a highly competitive time of year, we have lost teachers to surrounding districts because these other districts have been able to extend a contract to that teacher right away. The administration is proposing a change that would put us in line with our fellow surrounding districts, which would delegate the final authority for teachers' contracts to the superintendent. The wording from TASB on the red-line copy of the policy that's in your packet for a teacher is contractual personnel below the administrator level. So when you see that, that's, they're referring to teacher. This change would allow the district to extend a contract to a teacher immediately rather than having to wait the two or three weeks for the next board meeting. This proposed change would not affect, would only affect teacher contracts and not administrator contracts. Administrative employees would still, and we're thinking principals and directors, they would still, just like the current policy, be presented to the board for final approval before a contract is extended. The Policy Committee reviewed this recommendation, this change to DC Local, and we present it tonight for your consideration.
Is there any questions? Does require a vote?
For approval.
Motion by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Gallin. All in favor signify by saying aye. Ayes have it. Thank you very much. There be no further business. We are adjourned. Thank you for attending tonight.